We'll go, this is Village of North Hudson Regular Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. For Tuesday, one December twenty twenty at six thirty. We call the order and roll call, please.
Trustees Nelson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wacken.
Here.
Trustees Ice.
In here.
Alrighty, um, the first item on the agenda is Minutes Regular Finance Personnel Committee meeting. From twenty seven October twenty twenty, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Kirk, is there a second? Thank you. Is uh, any discussion, corrections, amendments, or uh, additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you, item three, claims review and recommendations, is there a motion?
Uh, Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve December twenty twenty non-recurring claims of thirty six thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty one cents?
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Tim. Any uh, questions or comments?
Anything out of the ordinary Melissa?
No, the only larger number in there was um, for hot patching. That was done by the county, that makes up one of the bigger numbers, otherwise everything else is pretty standard for this month.
Thank you, any other questions? Hearing none, uh, let's see, that's a claims, it's a spending, so Kurt?
Yes.
Tim? Brian?
Yes.
And yes, thank you. Okay, item four, request for write-off of delinquent personal property taxes, discussion possible recommendations.
Uh, Stan, can I move to the village trustee to write off fifty six dollars twenty four cents in personal property taxes as uncollectible?
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
Should be village treasurer, not trustee.
Sorry, village, yeah, village treasurer, please.
I'm not giving you a blank check there Kirkie.
Okay, uh, any other uh, questions or comments on that, Melissa, just a quick, you could give us a synopsis of what that is?
Yeah, so we have these once in a while, it's not a common thing, but if the assessor is made aware of a new business, you know, they'll send out information to them um, as far as personal property amount. If the business doesn't respond at all, which happens quite often, then the assessor has to go with what they think is in there. So the business never responded at all, but upon research and trying to figure out who they are and stuff. Um, I believe they're just using, that address is actually the uh, storage units. In the shopyards, I believe they're just using that as a mailing address, but there's not actually a business there. So they took it off the assessment rule.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, I think this one we can do with all in favor of uh, the writing off the delinquent personal property tax, seeing by the saying aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item five, twenty twenty one building inspector zoning administrator contract, Brian Word, discussion possible recommendations.
Move to improve the independent contractor agreement between the building inspector and zoning administrator and the Village of North Hudson.
Thank you Brian, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, uh, discussion.
How long has Brian been doing this for us, again?
Oh gosh, it's been, I've been here over seven years, he's been there here ever since I started and I believe it was a couple of years before that, it's been at least ten years.
Oh yeah, as long as I've been on the board. So uh, yeah.
And the contract is the same, it's, there's nothing different in it um, from other years. Um, he is good at, as far as he brings us boxes every year, he'll bring old files, um. His record keeping is really good, so he keeps up to date on all the building permits and the blueprints and things like that, so we have those downstairs, prior to that, it's not so good and it's hard to ever find anything for older homes, but um, so we haven't had any real issues that I'm aware of, but everything is pretty much the same, so.
Thank you, anything else? All in favor of uh, recommending to the board Brian Word's contract be continued, signal by saying aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item six, twenty twenty one animal warden contract, Daryl Hall, discussion possible recommendations.
Uh, Stan, can I move to approve Daryl Hall to um, redo his contract to be our animal control contract?
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks Tim, uh, I believe in Melissa I talked about this uh, he's uh, we've had zero point zero complaints, I believe.
Yeah, I haven't had any complaints or anything, I know our fees are coming in about half of what we've been paying previously. Um, he files everything on time, I checked with Nathan on that to make sure we're getting his invoices timely and things like that. So you know, he's learning, it's his first year. Um, I know he's spoken to the chief a couple of times just to figure out how things work, you know, with the village and what he should be doing, should not be doing. Um, I don't have any issues with him, like I said, the fees are coming in about half the price, I don't know if the chief has any concerns or anything.
Yeah, at this point, I I I won't say that I have any concerns, I obviously it's different, it's new, um, we have had a couple of dealings, not a lot, we don't have a ton of dogs um, that we have been picking up, um, unlike in the past, but I do know that a couple of times the an officer has picked up a dog and kind of has called him and basically because he's coming from, I believe it's Osceola. Um, there's some reluctance to start heading this direction in the event that we find the owner in the meantime, and he has to turn around and at that point he does not charge the village uh, for that, you know, attempt or that, the start this direction. Um, so we've, we're still kind of working through if there are any going to be any kinks on picking up dogs after hours, those kind of things, but at this point most of the time, we've actually found the owners prior to having him show up. Um, Melissa, I don't think you probably have had a a lot of uh, pickups, have you in the last year?
I don't believe so, no. Even if it's like a dry run, he will come, but like I said, I think of this first year was really a learning curve. Um, he, it's different for every municipality he works with, as far as what they expect him to do and not to do, so it's been a lot of um, just learning what he should be doing, what he shouldn't, he has called me in the past, you know, like, should he be doing this or that, and I know I've referred him to the chief, I don't, you know, because I think it's important, they, since they deal with each other probably more than anybody else, that they talk as to what's expected out of Daryl, so.
Yeah, and I think not unlike our former uh, animal control warden, when they have to issue citations, it's not as fluid for them as it is for us because they're handwritten, the old paper citations, they don't have access to our electronic version, um, so it we did kind of walk through that a little bit, but um, very easy to talk to, very easy to um, communicate with, um, and those types of things, so you know, I'm not, definitely not opposed to to moving forward with or the board moving forward, I would, I would support that for this year.
So chief, what's the prac- what's the practice, um, when you find that a dog? Or does the resident call it in normally, that that on lost dog?
Sixty forty on us rolling up on a dog just running, you know, loose versus somebody calling in saying they've seen a dog out running around. And then, well, if we can latch on to it, get in the back of our squad car, see if it's got tags, if it does, we'll try to bring it home. If not, then the animal control ward, I had one where I posted something on Facebook just to try to save some time. And uh, within five minutes, we, we knew who the owner was, so. Um, if we can't find somebody, or it's maybe two o'clock in the morning, Facebook's probably not going to be a whole lot of help. We'll just uh, call him and he'll pick it up and bring it over to St. Craig Animal Shelter in Luker.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of uh, uh, continuing our uh, contract with Daryl Hall for our animal warden uh, issues, signal by saying aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, twenty twenty one police squad purchase and outfitting, discussion possible recommendations.
And I have two motions, motion number one, to move to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty one hybrid Ford Explorer Police acceptor. Interceptor, I'm sorry, from the, from the Hudson Ford and a purchase installation. And removal of equipment to outfit the squad in an amount to that to say forty five thousand three hundred with seventeen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars coming from the police department vehicle assigned fund. And then remainder of the assigned funds in the twenty twenty one budget, the seat of the vehicle will not take place until one one twenty twenty one. Motion number two, which I'll have separate, is to move to authorize the sale and trade of a two thousand nine Ford Police acceptor, with the proceeds of the sale to be placed in the police department vehicle assigned fund.
Thank you Tim.
Stan, can I motion to approve the one and two? Probably do one at a time though.
Do one at a time.
I motion to approve number one, the purchase of the vehicle.
Thank you.
Uh, first hybrid we've had chief, chief, this is the first hybrid we purchased.
It is, and ironically enough Sergeant on this meeting, but he was the one that did the research and uh, I think it was pretty impressive, some of the information that came forward from Ford on the cost savings for fuel over, uh, really, I I think the, the farthest out they went was five years based on my issue statement. But um, typically these squads were keeping six to seven years depending on um, budget stuff, so I think the, the amount of cost savings on the long run um, is to be commended and so Sergeant Hector did uh, push forward to me uh, recommendation for the hybrid, he does have a personal vehicle, uh, maybe more than one, but I know one that is a hybrid or uh, does have some electronics in it, and so he's familiar with those types of vehicles and this particular vehicle will be assigned to him.
And no, no, no difficulties when you're uh, equip- equipped, installation of all the equipment that's in it, when you have a hybrid?
I talked to our installer and asked if there was anything, you know, different that we would have to install based on that, and um, he said, no, everything would be exactly the same um, it would still run off of battery power, but during the time where it wasn't in use, um, you know, it would, it would alternate or would, it would work itself out, um, these are, this is the second year, I believe, that the twenty, or that this particular model, not the twenty twenty one, but this size and and particular vehicles had a hybrid. And uh, good feedback on the last year's hybrid models and how they worked as squad cars.
Does that mean you don't have to keep them plugged in as much as you do with our old vehicle or our other vehicles?
Yeah, I'm not going to make promises on that, I think it's still important that when the officers are off duty, that it continues to charge, but I I do know that uh, we should have a lot of savings on the, on the fuel side, which is going to be helpful.
No, that sounds great, sounds great.
The best vehicle, I like that. I said Sergeant getting the best vehicle, interesting.
Did, did, a lot of these are incentives to keep our staff at full, you know, at full staff, and that's easy on the chief too, I think he does a great job on making sure that works that way.
That, and he's been the uh, proud driver of the last Crown Vic in our uh, fleet, so.
Yeah, he he's earned. Okay. Thank you, yeah, absolutely, okay, so that's a spending and uh, and we're, we're not going to have any bills or anything before the first of the year but we can get the ball rolling, so that's the plan, so uh, let's go with Kirk?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also agree, yes, and uh.
Stan, can I move to approve Tim's second motion of the trade-in of the twenty nineteen Ford?
Thank you for saving me on that one Kirk. Uh, is there a second?
I am the second.
You are the second, okay, so uh, comments or questions?
Where do you sell these chief?
Well, the last one we put on the uh, Wisconsin surplus website, uh, that was in two thousand ten. In about the same condition, be quite honest, the, the tires weren't quite as nice because we did have to replace the tires on this car uh, not too long ago, but we got them really cheap through a, a website. So I think we'll, we'll probably get about the same, we got two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars out of that particular squad. Um, I am going to check with Hudson Ford to see what potential trade-in costs. Interested in it as a trade-in to see if we could get more than that. Um, but both alternatives are in the motion, so whichever one, we get the, the best bang for our buck, that's the, what direction we'll go.
Thank you, is there any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, uh, let's see, that's a sale thing, so all in favor of the sale of the Crown Vic, signal by saying aye? Opposed? Thank you, and uh, that would say we are adjourned at six forty six, see you in a few minutes. Good name, good evening everyone, or good day, depending on when you're going to get a chance to watch this, I think we're being preempted by uh, uh, some of our Hudson uh, sports tonight, so uh, if that's the case, uh, you know, enjoy when you can, I'd like to call the uh, Village of North Hudson Regular Board Trustees Meeting to order at, on uh, Tuesday, one December at seven PM. Uh, if I get a short invocation. I know Father, that our nation needs you now more than ever. I, we pray for our leader, today for our leaders, open their hearts to your word and your will, please give us a reawakening to your ways and to your purpose for our country. Restore us to the knowledge and principles upon which this nation was founded. Roll call, please.
Trustees head? Leaf?
Here.
Heads here. Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Here, also Lori said she was here.
Here.
President Wacken?
Here.
Trustees Ice?
Here.
Okay, my screen just bailed on me, I thought I was going to be in deep trouble. Okay, thank you very much Jessica, uh, next uh, review and improvement is for regular board meeting of twenty seven October and special Village Board meeting of seventeen November, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any comments, corrections, additions to the minutes of either meeting? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, that signal by saying aye? Thank you. Okay, item three is com- comments from the floor, this is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues and opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda, and I believe we have uh, Andrew Barnes is with us, I believe.
Yeah, hi everyone, I'm a resident of North Hudson, I live on uh, Tenth Street North, um, and pretty close to the intersection of Tenth Street North and Cratley Lane, so we had just brought some concerns about um, and and a desire to have a four-way stop put in um, down Tenth Street and uh, Cratley Lane.
And I believe the chief has uh, uh, I mean, that's, you're, I think you're speaking for the group that, that sent the petition?
Yes, yep, that is correct.
And Stan, this is on the agenda item for later on, so it's definitely becoming an opportunity for Andrew to comment.
Uh, we, well, it's not, it's not a public hearing, so we, you know, we can't bring that in, that's why we had it committed this time. Yeah, no problem, no, uh, chief, uh, you've got, you know, some backup information to this, uh, that you'd like to share, please?
Well, Stan, if you don't mind, I'll wait until the actual motion.
Talk about it right now.
Okay, alright, alright, but uh, you know, I, we, uh, Andrew, we know there's an issue out there and uh, and uh, the chief has some good information that he supplied to everybody and uh, uh, we will bring that up at that time. Okay? Alright, uh, next on the agenda is uh, is there anybody else out there that has any other comments, I guess? Hearing none, uh, we'll go to item four, strive to survive presentation by uh, trustee Zeiss, uh, possible formation of a steering committee, uh, Tim, take her away.
Thank you Stan, um, I bring to the board, let me share my screen, um, an opportunity to form a steering committee, uh, the focus of this committee is to strive to survive Highway thirty five. Let me know if you can't see my screen. Uh, the objective of course, is to involve three main identities, um, that involves our businesses, our government and our community. And the focus would be to I'd start this steering committee early so we can become organized, obtain a small list of uh, oh, I'm sorry, obtain all the list of village businesses throughout the village. Create a calendar and that includes the steering committee events, point to the Wisconsin DOT construction calendar and timeline and any other type of business against that might happen throughout twenty twenty one. And the strategy of my plan is, is around communication and promotion and what we'd be, we best and consistent ways of handling how we can survive this Highway thirty five construction. First identity is the, is the government, and the key behind that is to lead. My focus there is to organize and plan a regular meeting, to have a representative from each id- identity of the three circles to form a small steering committee, develop a consistent communication plan throughout all of the construction, be flexible. While throughout the government, this might be allow certain parking on certain streets. Maybe provide different access into certain businesses and how that's going to change. And then be more flexible, uh, anything else we could possibly do, they make it easier for our community through this year event construction. Or some event construction, I should say.
No, I really appreciate you getting this started Tim, I think it's something that uh, you know, with the issues we've been having with the businesses and stuff this year, with the different uh, uh, requirements by the state or whatever, I mean, two years in a row, I mean, if we've got that kind of issues, we're going to have we won't have any businesses to, left here.
Yeah, let me have the last next hearing and uh, I will move on to the next one. Uh, the next one's going to be the business itself, I think the key behind them of course is to make a list, to reach out to each of them and to inform them of this plan. Ask them to share information about their business, this will help promoting and communicating throughout the community. And have these businesses work together to get through this construction time, um. And also have them promote and partner with other commu- other businesses, for one, one business might might offer, I just come in another business in our question, just to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're promoting all the activities throughout the year, um, that they're impacted by this.
Tim, are you, are, are you still supposed to be um, showing a slideshow because we went away from it?
Yeah, I know, man, I do have it up there also on the screen, but I won't try shit again.
It's also in the packet too, so we're cool.
Yeah, it's in the packet. Um, that's why I went in the voice, because I know my, my flaky today, so at home here. The next one, the role of the community, that is to be supportive, that people are not supportive is that uh, we have representatives from the community and they, and that they become creative in how we can promote our business, business throughout, throughout the year. Um, I want value input fro- from creating different events. Work together with other organizations like the Neighborhood Watch, the Pepper Test, and other type of commu- uh, organizations throughout North Hudson, the key behind this is that we communicate, promote and help survive the stake out of the box, and I think if we get community members involved, I think they can help us um, be, be uh, more creative in promoting this activity. Finally, these three entities, leadership and participation and support from off on the government, business and community. And we know it's been difficult times in twenty twenty that you discussed, Stan. Uh, we understand construction in twenty twenty one will have another impact on our community. With the lead of the government, participation of the businesses and support for the community, if we can survive this construction of Highway thirty five, I'm looking for a motion to form the steering committee. That would include our local government and also add additional time to commit to our local government and then move it forward and and establishing this, this group from the three different circles above. Any questions?
Tim, I had a question for you quick, I think it's a great idea, obviously it's going to be a, a really trying time for our village. Um, wondering how you're thinking of funding things that we would need to do to promote it, it's going to come
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not, I'm, my intention is not to have any funding at all that possibly would need be needed. I do, you know, feel we have some organization to potentially lean on if we need to. But I think that's the creativity that we're looking to have to bring to this organi- this steering committee, to do this without any additional funds that would be needed. Um, the key thing is communicating and promoting, use, use, you know, use your multimedia um, tools, you know, your Facebook and your which I'm not on, but those people in your, your, all your other different uh, uh, communication tools to get this word out, um. But I don't know what fun, you know, what different expenses, what, what expenses it would take to do this, I mean.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that, you know, along the lines, businesses are going to be advertising anyway, typically they have a budget for all their businesses, so if we can get some messaging out um, through that venue, you know, if it's consistent among all the businesses that are advertising, that would help.
Yeah, that, yeah, that key word consistently is what I want to start creating, that, that consistent plan, consistent communication, to make consistent promotion of the different activities. You know, I thought ideas might be promoting certain businesses on a monthly, monthly basis or two, every two week basis. And um, I know there's certain businesses that people aren't even aware of that are here in the village of North Hudson, but I know are going to be affected by this. And I think the goal here is to really get their name out and also to work together with all the other businesses and um, also the community, and hopefully we can get through this.
And hopefully the DOT, you know, with their uh, time schedules and everything like that will, you know, work it, you know, I mean, so that the, the holding thing isn't tore up and that, you know, we'd be able to get people around, you know, to our detour routes. Because I still believe, uh, I don't know, Kevin is uh, we're still going to get Bridge Act, or I mean, the bridge will be open one lane or whatever, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, yep, that's what discussions was after we went through all those public informational meetings, but yeah, that was what I understood too, just so we have, you know, access between the city and the village at all time.
And I think, and that, that there will be a two-week period where the bridge will be completely closed, I have a meeting tomorrow with the Hudson Fire Chief. And I have reached out to the Lakeview EMS chief to have, to start conversations on making sure that we have coverage or there, for those two weeks where we do not have that easy access from the city. So there are some things that are, are processing, but I think with Tim's point, uh, it would be nice to make sure that everybody's on the same page and, and really because in today's day of social media and, and false information or misinformation, it'd be nice to, you know, we'll point them to the DOT for contract or construction information, but I think the local information needs to have kind of one point, one consistency like Tim was talking about.
Kevin, I thought they were going to do the bridge in two pieces.
Yeah, there's, you know, obviously they're doing the overlay.
Right.
Basically, it's just a coating over the top of the deck, so it's not going to be a tremendous long period of time that that's going to take place. But, you know, I know that was very debated at those public informational meetings to have access between the two communities. Um, so I know they took that input in.
So now you're saying they're not going to do half at a time and keep a lane open?
No, that's not what I said, there will be two weeks in which the bridge will be completely closed because of the other crosspoints at South Street, Wisconsin Street, North Street, and I believe River, where they have to dig down underneath the um, the roadway and go all the way across, and so there will not be a one-lane access point during that time, so they will still be doing half a head, there will be one lane that will be open for three minutes at a time, I believe is what they said, it'll be signaled. And it'll be back and forth, there will be partial traffic, or there will be limited traffic based on the fact that it's still a detour route. Uh, but what I was talking about was the final, the actual two-week period of time, they're hoping um, that it will be completely closed, no, no traffic either direction during that period of time.
And then that thing I would add, I'd like to bring, you know, keep this, it, it considers motion to, to pass, you know, be approved, I'd like to I'd like to continue this twenty twenty one to have this on the agenda so it can continue to bring back information back to the board and the community as far as what's happening with the strategy survive going forward.
Well, that's good.
I would move to form the steering committee if you need a motion, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Sir's second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, proceeding with the strive to survive, uh, initiative, uh, uh, saying, by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And any opposed? And, uh, if you're interested in serving on this, uh, steering committee, uh, uh, let us know or let Melissa know and we can compile it in order to get the, a list. Tim, I'm sure that, uh, you've done the work on this, that you're going to be ready on the top of this.
Yes, thank you. Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so, uh, motion accepted and carried. I guess we go on to number five. Twenty twenty one mobile home park license Pam Zappa approval requested, is there a motion?
Uh, Stan, can I move to approve the twenty twenty one mobile trailer park permit from Pam Zappa?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Phil, um, is there?
Uh, Melissa, do you want to inform what this kind of is for anyone watching her?
Yeah, so each year, Pam Zappa owns the mobile home park itself. And each year they have to apply for a license to continue. So this, there's six, I believe, um, mobile homes on the lot right now. So this is just a yearly permit that she's required to have.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of, uh, the mobile home park license for Pam Zappa, saying, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Okay, item six, uh, new business from the border staff. Uh, the president's comments, uh, will be very, uh, uh, brief. Uh, it's been an absolutely unusual year today, you know, to say the least. And, uh, we already know that, as we just discussed, the, uh, uh, next year was also going to be a challenge. So, uh, you know, I just, uh, want everybody to, you know, be ready for that. And, and then I just, uh, you know, I just, I pray that everyone has a safe, happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and especially a Happy New Year. I don't think many people were going to be sad to leave twenty twenty behind us. Uh, Melissa?
Yeah, so I have quite a few updates tonight, but I'll try and get through them quickly. So it's time to already start thinking about the spring twenty twenty one election. So the spring election will be held on Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty one. Any residents who are interested in running for village board can pick up the necessary paperwork at the village hall. Paperwork must be filed by five o'clock PM on Tuesday, January fifth, twenty twenty. And the first day to circulate nomination papers is today, or excuse me, January fifth, twenty twenty one. Uh, offices up for reelection, our village president, three village trustee positions and the municipal judge position. Incumbents are Stan Wecken, Lori Head, Kathy Leaf, Kirk Nelson and Ben Wobat. And then in regards to taxes, as an update from the budget hearing, the school credit amount has been received and the overall mill rate, including all taxing jurisdictions, will be twenty point seven one per one thousand of assessed valuation. And that is up from twenty point one two for this year. And then tax bills should be mailed out by mid-December. And then also just an update on the routes to recovery, uh, grant and where the village was able to spend, uh, those funds. The village was able to use approximately fifty three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars of the routes to recovery grant money for various purchases and also improvements to the village hall and the public works garage relating to COVID nineteen. A review of the purchases are as follows. We were able to purchase an additional DS two hundred voting equipment to process the large amount of absentee ballots. Cleaning and sanitizing, sanitizing supplies, PPE, touchless hand sanitizers and soap dispensers and social distancing signs. IT remote support for remote work. Protective shields for the elections. Payroll reimbursement for public safety employees who needed to take leave due to COVID. iPads for village trustees and laptops for general government employees for Zoom meetings. Air purifiers for work areas and public spaces. New audience chairs and committee member chairs for the boardroom. Purchase and installation of HVAC improvements for the village hall and the public works garage. All of the carpet and tile, um, all the flooring was cleaned throughout the village hall. And all the duct work was cleaned as well. And then postage for absentee ballots and absentee certificate envelopes. And then also we received the, uh, WEC CARE subgrant and that amount was two thousand, nine hundred, forty dollars and ten cents. Over two thousand of that was spent on postage and labels for absentee ballots. The rest was spent on cost of extra colored copies of absentee voting instructions that were included with the ballots and the extra hours put in by staff to process absentee ballot requests. So we're able to make good use of all those funds and, um, you can already tell the difference in the air quality, I think, at the village hall. So it, it's been making a big difference with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, item seven is, uh, planned commission and they did not meet. Item eight, personnel and finance committee recommendations, uh, claims. Is there a motion to approve claims?
Uh, Stan, can I move to approve the December twenty twenty non-recurring claims of thirty six thousand, eight hundred, ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, please?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh, where's my list? Tim? Mr. Zeiss?
Yes. Yes.
Kirk Nelson?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I also will be, yes. Okay. Next item, uh, request for write-off of delinquent personal property taxes approval requested. Is there a motion?
Uh, Stan, can I move the village treasurer to approve the write-off of fifty six dollars, twenty-four cents in personal property taxes?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the request for the write-off, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, thank you. Item C is, uh, twenty twenty one building inspector slash zoning administrator contract with Brian Wirt.
Stan, I move to approve the contract, independent contractor agreement between building inspector and zoning administrator and the village of North Hudson for twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got all team a second. That sounds good. Uh, any, uh, questions, comments or discussion? I know in finance, we talked about it and somebody says, how long has he been with us? And, you know, I've been on the board over ten years and, uh, and he's been there as long as I have. And I don't think there are a lot of options out there, but, uh, we'll see because I've heard rumors that he's thinking about dabbling in retirement. So, but, uh, we will, uh, all in favor of, uh, keeping, uh, Brian Wirt as our inspector, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, and item D for personal and finances, animal warden contract with Daryl Hall approval requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move the approval of Daryl Hall for animal control contract?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, is, uh, discussion?
Uh, chief, if you want to give a quick recap for someone's just catching this meeting, so the first one, that'd be good, please.
Thank you, trustee Nelson. Yeah, the, uh, last year with Daryl Hall has been, uh, just a learning curve for us. I think things have gone well. We are, number of dogs that have been on the loose seems to have gone down. Um, the one struggle that, um, we've kind of tried to overcome is just that they, instead of having the animal control warden live in the village, uh, this person lives, um, I think the Osceola area. And so response times are a little bit different. We have had a couple of dogs that we've picked up and basically he started this direction. And I believe we've found the owner prior to him arriving. And so we're trying to iron out some of those issues. But overall, I think that Daryl Hall has done a good job. He's been very responsive to questions, concerns. He's reached out on a, a couple of different issues. And so, um, I would support the board moving forward. Uh, he's been good to work with.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of renewing the contract with, uh, Daryl Hall as our animal warden, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, public works committee recommendations, chair update, Brian?
Uh, Stan, public works did meet. We have nothing to bring forward. And we'd like to remind the village residents of, uh, the snow as it comes to make sure that you're putting your crash cans up on the curb instead of out in the street, that you're getting your cars moved when there's a snow event coming. And it will help assist us, uh, in a lot of ways to be able to get the roads cleaned and not have ice start building up on the road on the edges because you're putting those garbage cans out there where we can't get to them. So please be mindful of that. That's it.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, item ten, public safety committee recommendations, chair update, Tim?
And we did meet and we have a couple of items to bring to the board. Uh, first is, uh, a motion to install stop signs by Kratley Lane North and Tenth Street North for east and westbound traffic.
Uh, and.
If you made that motion, Tim?
Yes, that's a motion.
Then Kathy second that? Yes, okay. Thank you. Uh, discussion?
Yeah, and discussions. Yep, has more things to add to this and I think, uh, Mr. Barnes, I believe is on the call also if he wants to comment.
Well, he already did comment. I was going to say the chief has a, a little, uh, presentation or that he'd like to share about the, uh, the data that we have for there. What the?
Yeah, so I, I've got for you here, as I've shared my screen, is just to show a little bit of data. Um, back in, I believe it was two thousand and sixteen, we installed the speed display sign on Kratley Lane that, um, monitors and, and gives information to drivers that are westbound on Kratley Lane North. And so with the, um, some of the software is able to put together reports. And so I was, and this should be in your packets as well, but I was able to put together some information from, um, unfortunately, it will only give you the information when you go out and grab it off the sign. There were some shortages of staffing and so in two thousand and nineteen, I don't have a ton of information, but I think it's, it speaks volumes because it talks a little bit about the volume of traffic. Um, between, and you'll see at the top, I've got highlighted here, between May seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen and July thirteenth of two thousand and nineteen, uh, there were two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty vehicles that traveled, uh, westbound on Kratley Lane. Um, and because Kratley Lane is a dead end, uh, hopefully what goes out comes back. And so we can probably say that's a pretty good amount that was also eastbound on Kratley Lane. You can see towards, uh, the right-hand side there, a, a total volume by speed. Um, back in those, during those two months, we had speeds, you know, kind of ranging from, uh, it starts to pick up around the thirty-one to thirty-five and then we're up into the fifty-one to fifty-five. And so we're talking well above and, and double the speed limit in that area, which is twenty-five miles per hour. So that was the two thousand and nineteen numbers. I will, I guess, asterisk back with pre-COVID. Um, back when the ballpark, uh, or the, the ball fields are being utilized, obviously throughout the summer months and whatnot. Uh, and so the volume was a little bit higher. When we look over at the next report, which is here from July eighth of two thousand and twenty to, uh, November thirteenth, uh, actually it's November twelfth, that's incorrect, uh, of twenty, our volume was seventy-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six that were westbound. So quite a significant change in the volume of traffic. Um, and it does show also in the speed of the traffic did slow considerably, uh, as far as the averages go. But we did have some outliers and some, uh, fairly fast vehicles. You'll see the volume over time, it kind of ranges from anywhere from six, uh, AM all the way, uh, into the mid to late evening hours. And so that was some of the data that we brought forward to the meeting. Um, because there was a request by some of the residents in the neighborhood or nearby to Tenth and Kratley that had asked for, uh, stop signs to be placed on Kratley Lane at Tenth Street North. And really their, their intent, the, from the letter that was written, uh, and given to the board as part of the packet, as well as conversations, uh, emails and whatnot that I've received over the years is really the concerns of speed on Kratley Lane. Uh, we've had officers that have sat out there, they've been, um, assigned to sit out and try to slow traffic. We've put out the speed display sign, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. We've also put out the speed trailer to try to just identify and slow traffic to let them know how fast they're going. And it does not seem, other than the fact that there is a less volume, it doesn't seem that the speeds have really reduced all that much. Uh, and so the neighbors, because of the amount of children that live in the neighborhood and that particular intersection, have requested those signs. I did reach out to Kevin Oyam, uh, who's also on the meeting tonight. And really there are no restrictions that are placed on us, uh, as far as having to do studies or do anything uh, more than what we've kind of look, are looking at. Uh, unless the board wants additional information or other studies to be done prior to this decision. Um, he basically said it is a feeder street, obviously out into the, um, township as well and to some of the businesses or at least to the Rod and Gun Club and the Booster Fields. Um, and so it's really a board decision on whether or not those stop signs are placed. I did meet with Patrick, um, Mo's today. Uh, we went out to that intersection and kind of scoped out where the signage would be. And we would have to move a couple of the crosswalk signs just because of, uh, line of sight for where the speeds or the stop signs would be placed. Um, but we do have a plan in place in the event that the board does pass or make a, uh, make this recommendation to, to install the, the stop signs on how we would go about doing that. I think that's about all the information that I have that, that's been presented, but I would be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Chief, it's also near a bus stop too, as I recall.
Correct. There is a bus stop at one of the residences just north of Kratley on Tenth Street North. That's correct.
Also attached to the package, you're going to see a letter from the surrounding residents that kind of reinstated their, the concern. So you can read that out there also.
Unfortunately, the ground isn't froze too bad yet. So if, uh, if the board does approve this, that, uh, uh, we should be able to install fairly easily. So that would be a, that would be, and Patrick's nodding his head, so he's happy about that too. So, uh, is there any further discussion?
Like chief said, they gave options to try to fix the problem, but apparently it's not working. So I, I'm totally agreeing with this.
Sounds good. Okay.
There are a lot of young families with young children on that corner. I see them every day. Yep.
Okay.
Lori lives upright by there too, so she's driving through it all the time.
And Stan, I guess the one thing that, uh, I think I had emailed to you and, and I neglected when the motion came out is that if, if this does pass, if the motion could include or if there could be an amendment to include when that would become effective, so that Patrick and I can make a plan, whether it's tomorrow or it's a week from now, two weeks from now, just so that we have some direction on when that would, uh, go into place.
So how long does it take to get a stop sign or do you have some sitting around?
Uh, we, I could get a temporary, two temporary ones for right now and I don't know that I have.
I just don't know what's reasonable from your standpoint is what I'm thinking, you know?
A week.
Right.
Okay, so then I'd amend my. Okay. So then I'd amend my motion to say within a week of passage.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's, uh, you know, I mean, uh, it's a good, you know, I mean, the safety, the people up there and the way they, I know they come in from that side. Well, just look at thirty-five coming into the village is another place that we have issues with speed and stuff too. So, uh, yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I'm very much in favor of it. So with, if there's any other discussion?
So we have a new motion from Kathy that says to have it up from Tim for the next week.
Yeah. Yep. However, you want to do it. And technically we should probably vote on the amendment first and then the main motion if you wanted to be real specific.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment, signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. All right. Now the, the original motion, you want to vote on that?
Yep.
All in favor of the original motion? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we will start shopping for stop signs. Patrick?
Thank you, chief and Pat.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you guys for the work you've done. Okay, item, uh, let's see. C is the twenty twenty-one police squad purchase and outfitting approval requested.
Stan, I have two motions. I'll read the first one. I moved to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-one hybrid Ford Explorer Police Interceptor from Hudson, Florida and the purchase and installation and removal of equipment to outfit the squad in amount to not DC forty-five thousand, three hundred with seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars coming from the police department vehicle assigned fund and the remainder of the other sign funded twenty twenty-one receipt of the vehicle to take place after January first, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, discussion?
One of the things they brought up in our finance committee is that this is the hybrid, that for our first hybrid that we purchased in our Hudson. So I just asked questions to chief about that.
So we're showing our green side? Is that what you're saying?
I guess.
Okay, that one sailed right through. Okay, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to, uh, purchase in outfitting of this new squad, signify by by saying, no, that's spending one Kathy.
Yes.
Uh, Lori?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. And now the second motion, Tim?
Stan, again, my second motion is to authorize the sale or trade-in of the two thousand nine Ford Police Interceptor with the proceeds of the sale to be placed in the police department vehicle assigned fund.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and, uh, it's not really a spending issue. So all in favor, parties are discussion? I see our, our friends from, uh, Eric and Milky are showing up. So, uh, we're almost there, guys.
Okay.
We're, we're almost there. So, uh, all, all in favor of the, uh, sale of the, uh, the, uh, Crown Vic, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, public welfare committee recommendations, chair update.
Uh, Stan, we did not meet.
Thank you. How about park board?
We did not meet, but we are meeting this two days from now and, uh, we have pretty good, great news about, um, a, a new, hopefully hockey area behind there and a couple of other stuff. So it's going to be a big week for the park board.
Well, that sounds good. And that's a nice little teaser. So, uh, we're looking forward to your next, you know, meeting so that we can find out what's going on. Okay, the next on the agenda is the board may convene in the closed session. Okay, we are back in open session at, to the priest, nine fifty-four. Apologize to everyone. I've never had been this long on a meeting. And, uh, we are, uh, now adjourned. Good night, everyone. I hope you have a blessed day, week, and a very merry Christmas.
Thank you, Stan. Merry Christmas.